So I'm going to open it up for public comment. As we have done in the past, this is how we're going to do in the future with a couple of changes. First is that it will be a two-minute maximum comment period. Side note, the goal is not to get to two minutes. The goal is to be brief, make your point, make your point clear. And my suggestion to all is to state you are in favor or you support it, or you're not in favor and don't support it, just say it upfront. All need to start with your name and address for the record. And on that note, I did reach out to the solicitor from questions from residents in town, and I am going to limit it to comments from Bristol residents only. And I did check with the solicitor, and that is absolutely acceptable. If this were a public hearing, so for example, second reading for an ordinance change, that limitation would not be possible. But because it is not a required public comment here, and I'm going to ask the solicitor just to agree with me, just make sure I'm on the same page and I understood correctly.
You absolutely understood correctly. You put it exactly the way it is. It's not a public hearing, and you do have the authority to limit comments to Bristol residents.
Thank you. So it will be two minutes, which is pretty significant time. And the change here is that in the past, I've kind of been a little bit flexible with the time, and unfortunately, we had a few that went way over. So in the effort of keeping it fair and equal, I will keep a two-minute timer here. You will probably hear it go off, because I think I set it to do that. And I will remind, if you are still speaking at one minute and 45 seconds, I will remind you at 15 seconds. And at two minutes, we will mute you. So there will be no exceptions to that, even if you're in mid-statement. So I ask that you keep your comments concise, so you can share your comments, and you can make your points, and people can hear them. If you're thinking to yourself, oh, boy, I thought I had three minutes to do this, you may want to move yourself down a little bit on the list, give yourself a moment to take a few things out, so you can make your points and make them clearly. So one more time, limited to Bristol residents only, two minutes, I will keep the timer. At 1:45, I'll remind you that you have 15 seconds left, and at the two-minute mark, you'll hear this probably go off, and you will be muted, and we will move to the next person. I will start the timer after I've confirmed that the caller can actually hear me, and we can hear them, to be fair. And I ask all, and I will remind you all, to state your name and address for the record. I think I covered everything. So with all of that being said, how you speak is you need to raise your hand digitally. And Chris Vitale, if you could take a moment, unmute yourself, and remind all that are on this how to digitally raise your hand.
Charlie, Mr. Chairman, so if you are using the Zoom app, you can find the raise-hand feature at the bottom of your video screen. It'll show it as a little emoji icon with a hand raised. If you are calling in by phone, because I do see we have a few call-in listeners, you can use the raise-hand feature by doing the star nine on your dial pad.
So if you called in star nine, if you're using the Zoom app, Chris, excellent job expressing all of that, it was perfect. So I'm going to go down the list, and I'm going to start with the first person on the list, and it's Nick Pinello, and he's going to get kicked, because I actually got his name right. I never do, so I've been practicing that. So he's called in a few times, I've gotten it so wrong, and I'm sorry. So you are now unmuted. Can you unmute yourself, Nick?
Oh, yeah.
Excellent. So if you could state your name and address for the record, and then I will start the timer. Go ahead.
Thank you. Nick Pinello, 76 Kingswood Road in Bristol. I'm opposed to the establishment of a DEI committee as a formal town-sanctioned committee. I feel that it would be opening the door to other groups who would request a similar committee to address their perceived grievances. This committee would be decisive rather than inclusive. I know a number of Bristol residents and business owners who would not participate in tonight's meeting and make their positions public, because they're afraid of the repercussions from those with opposing views. Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you. Thank you for being brief, too. Okay, next on the list, let me just restart that, is Rayona Clemmons. And before you start, Rayona, Chris is going to be in control of muting and unmuting. So again, I will ask you to state your name and address for the record, and I'll start the timer. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Rayona Clemmons, 33 Elmwood Drive, right here in Bristol.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Nathan. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is a powerful statement with the ideology of a just community. Although we strive to build an equal community platform where everyone thrives, often there are objectives that fall through the cracks where the sum of the equation is skewed. I have read the petition before the town council today. I've also read the comments on social media, and I am quite concerned. The rhetoric alone is astounding. With my finger on the pulse of this community, I assure you that there are organizations in the community whose mission statement is to improve the lives of those who struggle regardless of ethnicity, race, or creed. For example, the vision that two of us had some seven years ago, Courageous Kids, a program that encourages children to stand up and stand out, we have learned through formal development of this project that our success is measurable, especially with community needs, as both parents and children continue to thrive. The community families have truly become our families. Along with members of our police department, Tim and Mary can attest to the program's success as both onlookers and participants. Tim alone is consistently in contact with me as well, verifying the needs of our community and that they're met, including the realm of education, where ironically, my conversation with Dr. Bryce was paralleled by a Warren School Committee member just last week. Chosen words were mine and mine alone. However, that's a story for another day. Children and families of socioeconomic circumstance struggle with schooling as well. Creating this awareness allows parents to return to work instead of sitting at the library, hopping on Wi-Fi that holds a signal so their children can learn. All of that said, we are about all children and their families. In our world, exploitation of color of skin to fit a narrative does not exist. We help an extremely diverse population and access all-day needs across the board. There's not a week that goes by where some-
I'm sorry, I have to keep to the schedule to be fair to all, and I dislike cutting anyone off, but I need to stay fair to all. And I know all will understand that. So next was Adam Ramus. So Chris, if you could unmute Adam. Excellent. So Adam, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Adam Ramus, at 116 Bayview Avenue in Bristol. Okay. I speak in favor of the creation of the DEI committee as a committee of the town council. I believe that this is an opportunity for us to bring everybody together after a period of time that both in the country and here in our local community, there has been a great deal of division. I have spoken often with the members of the working group that put this together. I know that the intentions are fair and just, that there is no, that nothing about the creation of this committee is intended to be a criticism of anything or anyone that has been done in the past, but rather, it is an offering and a belief that having a committee like this as a committee of the town government will provide a resource that will allow us to continue to improve in the way in which we relate to one another, and ensure that there are no inadvertent negative consequences of any of our actions, as well as taking an opportunity to draw on the talents and energy of so many who want and need to help everyone understand the great impacts and contributions that have been made by so many in all of the different facets of all elements of our history, and to celebrate the successes of members of so many different communities. I cannot think of a reason why this would be a bad idea. It is a tool that we can use, and if we use it well, it will only serve to improve our town government and our community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bethany Suzan Foster.
Hi.
Hi, Bethany. Just, I forgot to take a moment to say, I don't know if I said welcome to everyone, so I'm going to say welcome to the people that have already spoken, and then of course I'll moving forward with it, welcome to all. So just, I don't want to say that too many times, but of course, thank you for taking a moment, all that haven't spoken yet and all that have already, to share your thoughts. Bethany, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Bethany Suzan Foster, and my address is 33 Roma Street. I'm calling in tonight in favor of the committee. I want to thank the committee, the people who have worked on this committee for all the hard work they did. I really think that they took the council's concerns from the last meeting, and they went off and they created a really strong document, and one that we could use in this town as, to show our commitment to diversity and inclusion, to all the members of our community. And I think, you know, there's been a lot of talk here about different organizations. This organization serves this community, and this organization serves that community, and those are all great. And this, I don't see this committee as something that would replace any of these other organizations. All it does is give, is kind of show the town's commitment to making sure that we are inclusive, whether it's on race, or socioeconomic class, or ability, or, you know, any of the issues that may arise. The town has a way of addressing those issues. That is one of the purposes of the committee. The other is to actually celebrate those differences, which I think would be great for the town. And one of the reasons I think that it's important that it is included under the council is that the council can have some say possibly in who is on the committee, which means they can make sure that there are voices being heard that maybe wouldn't, you know, otherwise be heard. They can make sure that there is a, people from across the spectrum included in the committee, which would only make it all stronger. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Next on our public speaking list is Georgina McDonald.
Hi, thanks. I'm Georgina McDonald, and I live at 180 Ferry Road, and I'm speaking tonight against this being a formal town council-approved committee. I think the ambitions of this group are terrific, but I look at Bristol as being one of the most welcoming, inclusive communities I've ever been in. And I think that the implication by setting this committee up with an approval by the town council is that we have issues, that we're not inclusive. It presumes guilt until we're proven innocent. So I suggest that the council wish this group well, encourage them to meet, to sponsor activities, to do whatever they wish, but I don't think that it should be a town council-approved committee. And doing so, I think, would conflict with the town charter, which sets the council up to be in charge of policy matters. So I actually think that this is a negative as opposed to a positive. I know the group seems to think it's positive, but many people in town, and I was shocked with how many people I spoke to who were opposed to this but afraid to speak up against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bill Bullard. Bill, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Hi, okay, can you hear me? I just got that unmuted. Okay, great. Hey, my name is Bill Bullard. I live at 1292 Hope Street. I'm hoping it shouldn't be a surprise. I strongly support the proposed committee, as stated. I volunteered to help put the proposal together. Rob asked me to coordinate the mission statement and the charge, and I was happy to put huge my experience doing similar things for leadership when I was, was I was in the Navy and working with other services. And to reinforce what others have said, you know, when you do something like this, you absolutely can't make the people with authority to do what you want them to do. You know, all you can do is provide a framework of how they, in this case, the council could use your authority. And the council asked Rob to do that, and I think we helped them do that very well. And we're happy that it's now in the hands of the council, and I'm thankful to the people who helped me. They spent hours poring over it and worrying about everything from commas to, you know, to trying to weed out their troublesome spots. Ultimately, to me, diversity, equity, and inclusion is about understanding each other and understanding everybody in the community, and celebrating them, and bringing them together, and bringing them in. I don't fundamentally see how that's divisive. I mean, I think we've seen a lot of divisiveness recently, especially with what's happened in our country. I think if we want to prevent things like that from continuing and make, you know, make us better, and make us unsusceptible to things like that, I don't even know how to say that, you know, we need to do this. We need to understand each other. It makes us all better. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bob Campanella. Bob, if you could state your name and address for the record. You're muted at the moment. There you go.
Bob Campanella, four-way in court in town. I would not be in favor of a town council-approved DEI committee. We moved to Bristol approximately three years ago. I actually grew up here in return, because it's a great little town. We have many relatives here. One question that I keep pondering is whether there is any specific evidence related to an individual or group being denied access to address the town council in order to present any issues related to discrimination or inclusion. I think if any of these issues were presented, the town council was adequately prepared to address them. It seems that some of the laws covered in the Civil Rights Act of 1964 are some of the same issues being addressed by the proposed Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. The Civil Rights Act mainly prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin, among other things. I thank the council members for their service to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment, again, saying welcome to everyone. I also, the caller before, I want to thank him for his service, being in the Navy. Thank you. Next on the caller list was Denise. Denise, if you could state your full name and address for the record. Your, there you go. You can speak.
Good evening. I'd like to express my concern about the creation of a DEI committee. I strongly disagree with it.
Hello? Just, can you hear me? I'm not sure if you can hear me. I need you to state your full name and address for the record. If you hold on just one moment, looks like you're muted.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can now. So I'd ask if you could, if you could state your full name and address for the record. One moment. I'm sorry, we seem to be having a muting on and off. Bear with us. Chris, that is Denise doing that, not us, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Denise, you are currently muted. Denise, I'm going to come back to you. Next on the public call list was Joseph Liro. Joseph Liro, if you could state your full name and address for the record.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. Hello, everyone. My name is Joseph Liro. I live at 6 Forest Road. I'm here to ask town council members to please consider and weigh the bigger ramifications of endorsing and approving the DEI committee. I do believe that the DEI committee has a place, but it should not be intertwined with Bristol politics. Diversity, equity, inclusion are three powerful words that have very subjective meanings depending on who you ask. This committee should be established as a private, concerned citizens committee, and I strongly believe that it does not have any place within the political or official structure of the town of Bristol. If approved, more and more committees will come before this council for approval with their own objectives. Today, a new president and administration were sworn in. It's been a very challenging and difficult election season, and continues to be so. Unfortunately, we are a country divided, where censorship is gaining momentum, and many Americans believe in the cancel culture. If your beliefs don't sink, and you don't go along, you will get deleted, get canceled, and you may even lose your job. This is not the America I love, certainly not the America I want my children and grandchildren to live in. We can better achieve diversity, equity, inclusion, not by the town of Bristol sanctioning such a committee, but by actively working to stop this cancel culture, promoting kindness and civil discourse, and making this the legacy to pass on to our children. Thank you, Nathan. Thank you, town council members. Thank you.
Next, I'm going to go back, I'm sorry. Is Denise still on the call? Chris, we will come back. I don't see her there, but we will come back.
I do not see her either.
Okay. So she, obviously, will make sure that she has an opportunity to speak. Remy Delacruz is next on the list. If you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Remy Delacruz. I live in 62 Franklin Street. And I am a gay, black male professional. I've lived in Bristol for two years now. First, I just want to say that I'm for the petition. I think that anything that pushes unity and diversity forward is going to help all of us, no matter what race or color. And I want to say that I'm proud to be a part of this community, such a progressive community, and I've lived in so many places in the United States, and I, this is the first time I called it, I can call a place home, and I feel safe here, and I feel that the people truly care. And I also believe that if we do what's right and do the, not push our community forward, it will only inspire all the community, and so therefore change the entire world. I just want to thank Mr. Hancock for stepping up and saying, explaining this to us, and yeah, for the community. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Next on the list is Michael Burns. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michael Burns. I'm at 244 Metacom Avenue in Bristol. And I want to be clear that my opposition to the DEI committee is not an attack on any individual or group. My opposition is based on making this an arm of the government, on the erroneous presumption that Bristol is not a welcoming community, that this proposal is divisive, and it is intolerant of the beliefs of others. In this sense, DEI committee would seek a standardization of ideas by a dominant political or community group. As such, this strikes directly at the freedom of speech. It is a version of Orwellian thought police, and already, people in the community fear to speak their minds. This condition borders on incipient totalitarianism. I spent 20 years living and traveling in such societies, and the parallels I experienced there through a government DEI committee are striking. No society is perfect, or ever will be, but America has made amazing strides in recent decades to ensure the civil rights to all. The petitioner's proposal denies this fact of life and unfairly paints Bristol with an unwarranted identity politics brush. Two days ago, we celebrated the life of the great Dr. Martin Luther King, whose approach on race follows the line of Frederick Douglass and Booker T. Washington. The petitioner's view on race issues turns Dr. King's philosophy on its head. Dr. King focused on the content of character and on the individual, not the color of skin or group membership. In closing, while the words diversity, equity, and inclusion all sound nice, they have a coded meaning that is very different from common usage. They have a meaning that flies in the face of Dr. King's dedication to fighting injustice by appealing to what is best in the American tradition.
Thank you. As I said to the other callers, and also thank you for your service. Next is Amanda Esens. I hope I'm saying your last name correctly. If you could state your full name and address for the record.
Hi, thank you. Amanda Esens, 189 High Street. And I am in favor of the DEI committee. And there's many reasons that I am in favor. I think first of all, this committee is not going to be showing that we are not a welcoming committee. It's going to show instead that we are striving always to be more welcoming, to be the best community that we can be, and that we hold ourselves accountable, and we hold ourselves to the highest standards. I'm from here, and I've seen how incredible this community can be, and I always want to see us striving to be more inclusive. Okay? So there's a story I want to share with everyone tonight. I have a dear friend, an African-American, who was a resident in Bristol. And he would walk on the bike path, he would walk down Gibson, down the bike path, and the cops were called on him by residents. It happened once, and then it happened again, and the cops apologized to him, and they said, I'm sorry, the residents are calling us, and we have to come and check on you. And they'd ask for his ID, where he's going, where is he working? And he had to explain himself again and again, and he ended up taking that same route, well, he'd wear a shirt that said Bristol, Rhode Island, just so that he could show people that he belongs here, that he's part of this community. And I mean, hearing that story, of course, breaks your heart, to have someone feel like they have to prove that they belong here. But just knowing, if this committee had been here, if this had been in place, instead of feeling helpless, like how, what can we do to create change, and how can we help people understand and face this kind of fear at the table? Sorry, can I continue?
Yes, yeah.
I think that we could open discussions to this kind of fear and bring it to the table, include everyone, and let's start talking about why things like this happen, and-
Again, I don't enjoy cutting anyone off, and I'm going to stay fair. Next, I am not going to say your name correctly, I'm so sorry. I can say your last name. Seth, if you could say your full name and address for the record, I don't want to do it a disservice.
Yeah, my name is, my name is Selahatem. My voice is echoing? Okay, okay. I'm from Turkey, and I'm living in 189 High Street, and I have two kids. Two years ago, I came in this town, and I love Bristol. Bristol is, Bristol has lots of great people. And after Turkey, like, we have a really connection in my hometown, and I feel same in this place. But, but stuff happening. Like, we don't know everybody's story. Like, this group, I think, so important for our town, and so important for everybody. I have two kids, and they're going to be Kurdish-American, my wife's from here. And I want to know, because, because this town, this, this town hosting me in here, and I feel, I feel everybody is great, like, of course, of course, some, some wrong things happened in the past, like the last four years, to me, too. But I think, I think private organization is everywhere. I think, I think, like, this home, who is hosting this town, who is, who is, like, managing the Bristol, this feel, if, if they support this immigrant, if they support the diversity, this will, this will feel secure for me, forget me, and for my two kids. And then I can say Bristol is open for everybody. I would like to know, like, this elected person, this people. And, yeah, I think Bristol is great, Bristol is a beautiful place, and I would like to see this from elected people, and support this committee, and this committee doesn't make anything wrong. I think, thank you.
I got to tell you, this is one of the harder parts of my job, is cutting people off. I don't enjoy it at all. So next on the list is Nancy Kellner. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my, my name is Nancy Kellner. I live at 10 Hope Street. I moved to Bristol about three and a half years ago. I chose this community. I think it's been warm and welcoming, and I have been blessed with meeting- I think it's been warm and welcoming, and I have been blessed with meeting people of all shapes, sizes, abilities, colors. But one thing I wanna really stress about this committee, despite how wonderful I feel about this town, is that sometimes there are instances when not everyone is treated equally, not by intent, but by misunderstanding, or by policy impact. And creating such a committee does not signal that we are a town swamped with problems of inclusion, equity, and diversity. A previous caller said it was gonna be a signal. No, it's not. It's the opposite. It tells all the community members, disabled, people of color, seniors, immigrants, people of different religions, that their voices and their presence in our community is valued, and it can be a forum, a place where underrepresented people, marginalized people, can put their ideas forward with the support of a committee to take them further. The truth is, I really think that we're a fabulous community, but that doesn't mean we can't be better, and there's nothing about this committee that would be negative. It's just positive, associating with the town gives it the stamp of legitimacy, and I really hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Mary Ann Bergenholz. If you could state your full name and address for the record, please. You're currently muted. I'm just gonna give it an extra moment here, and we'll come back to Mary Ann in a moment. Okay, so we're gonna go to Denise McGregor. Denise, if you could state your full name and address for the record, when it's available. There you go. You are, there you go.
So, good evening. Again, Denise McGregor, twenty-four Kickenewett Avenue in Bristol. I would like to express my concern about the creation of a DEI committee. I strongly disagree with it. I don't think it is wise for a non-elected committee to advise or influence our town council in any way. It doesn't make sense for the council to yield their authority to a non-elected committee. Bristol's a beautiful town, and it, but it does not need more bureaucracy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm gonna go back, I think? No? All right. Next is Joel Hubble. If you could state your full name and address for the record.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, it's Joel Yuval. I live at four Ursula Drive.
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanna make a quick note of the irony in this conversation tonight. Several times it's been stated that people are afraid to speak about this committee due to the fear of repercussions, or that negative things will happen to them. That, that gets, that goes against the very nature of the spirit of this committee, to be able to dispel those kinds of fears, and to talk about the things that are at the root of those ideas, so that we can come to a common understanding. And going back to what Nancy Keller had just talked about, I think that was a fantastic summary of what this is really all about. It's, it's an opportunity to learn more about each other, not in a way that we focus on the here and now, but how we can look ahead. And I think that's vital for every, for where we are right now in history, to be able to look ahead at where we're going is incredibly important. And that's where this committee is needed, and that's why I fully support it. And I ask that this gets voted in, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Will Grappantine. If you could state your full name and address for the record, please. You are muted. You are still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Will Grappantine, one twelve Mulberry Road. I am speaking in opposition of a DEI committee for several reasons. First off, according to the petition, it is to promote, support, nurture diverse, welcoming community, but down in the proposition, it says it will remind people of enslaved people in America, indigenous people, and I feel that this committee will basically do the opposite. You do not welcome people to a community by reminding it of history's faults. You don't encourage criticism. Second, I'd like to say that diversity is a positive thing, but who is judging diversity? Is it based on objective numbers, metrics for the state, for the nation, or is it a subjective definition of what diversity holds? Last, I think equity, also a very positive thing. The definition is being fair and impartial, except this will do the opposite, because equity, opportunity is different than equity from outcome. And perceived fairness is overall different than actual fairness. So if this is going to affect the town and town policies, I think that it's best left as a private organization and unofficial to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have one hand left raised, which is Mary Ann Bergenholz. If you could state your full name, and we have a couple more added on later, so we will come back to that. I am going to shortly, Mary Ann, just bear with me just a moment. I'm going to shortly finish the public conversation. I know we've had a lot of it, I'm not gonna cut it off yet, but we're gonna get there shortly. Mary Ann, if you could state, excuse me, state your full name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Mary Ann Bergenholz, three sixty-six Hope Street. Thanks for letting me speak. I'm hearing still a lot of the divisive rhetoric that has happened and become worse and worse over the last period of time. I don't know why people are so afraid to talk about Bristol being a welcoming community. I know that there's a difficult history in Bristol. I don't know how many people realize that Bristol was named by UNESCO as a site of memory because of the Middle Passage history. But there's, the cancel culture, I don't understand what that is, and the way that people use it is that it's against the people who are saying what they don't agree with being able to say something. I would like to see this committee be appointed like the parade committee, Christmas committee. I think that there are going to be opportunities where we need a committee like this that is going to listen to everybody, and it will help our community have conversations. That's all that I'm looking for from this, and I support an appointment. And if Mary would like to check the way it goes, then I ask that you define that that's the way this committee should go, and embrace the idea of a conversation. Thank you.
Impressive timing. Next is Steve Nigges. I hope I'm saying that correctly. If you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you. Steve Nigges, new resident.
I can hear that you're there, but you're really tough to hear.
Sorry, Steve Nigges, ninety-two State Street.
Thank you.
As a new resident, I was very pleased to learn about the proposed committee, especially since it was being discussed by the town council. I'd like to speak in favor of the committee and propose to the council that they consider perhaps making it a one- or a two-year committee, and if the committee is needed, it'll prove itself, and if not, it can disband it at the end of a year or two. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, I'm gonna attempt, Armanah, I'm not gonna attempt. Meta is the last name, and I don't wanna do your name disjustice, that's why I'm not trying. If you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, thanks for letting me speak. My name is Aradha Mehta. I live on two Belvedere Drive, Bristol, for the last almost nineteen years.
So, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I am speaking in favor of this committee, living in Bristol for last so many years. I know Bristol is a great community, but we want to make it better. I'm not looking for any sympathy and trying to call out on people. I'm talking on my personal experiences, what my family and my kids have gone through in the public school and in the community. We need more awareness. It's not that town is doing something wrong. This is a great community, but we need to make it better. That's what I will request the town council to consider that, because it is something with, it is our committee, it is our town's committee, it's not a separate committee. We are part of town, we are Bristol resident, so what we are doing, we are doing it for the betterment of Bristol and making it a paradise in Rhode Island and in US. And I will just end my thing with Mahatma Gandhi's statement that we can make a better relationship based on four principles, which is respect, understanding, acceptance, and appreciation, and we need to teach these four qualities to our children so that they become more respectful, understanding, accepting, and appreciative. I'm not saying the town is not doing a great job, it's doing a great job, we need to make it excellent for the people living here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dawn. Dawn, if you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
Dawn Domingos, sixty-six Washington Street.
Go ahead.
So, there's not a week that goes by that Rayona and I are not helping a family, even though we are almost a year into a pandemic. Yet, they are not a committee, instead a form group that works in collaboration to reduce identified needs resulting from current or historical actions. My question to you is, is that far-fetched for this town council to add a responsible idea that leverages the words heard tonight and read through the letters received from both sides of this equation to come together and volunteer to help what we already have in existence for community betterment? Yes, both sides on it and on an equal platform, not one person in favor of this committee has offered Courageous Kids any help or volunteering. My suggestion to all of you that are, that are for this committee, get yourself involved. Get yourself involved with our Courageous Kids program, because we've done a great job doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dave Scarpino. If you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dave Scarpino. I live at nine thirty-two Hope Street. Thank you, Nathan. I'd like to draw a strong contrast between the words that the petitioner spoke today and the words that have been being used for the last three or four months. The petitioner is requesting the formation of a committee on an unset, unsubstantiated foundational premise, that Bristol is a flawed town in need of its committee's advice and counsel. He's using a national narrative of systemic racism and bias and applying it to Bristol without adequate local evidence, which is simply wrong. There's been no evidence at all presented tonight. I just wanna read you a few of the words that have been used by the petitioner in drafts of this proposal, and also in the newspaper and online, that this committee is to bridge divides and bring our community together, that we can make Bristol a place that is welcoming and inclusive for everyone, including those who experience discrimination and marginalization, and finally, provide recommendations for inclusive and equitable policies to the town. And yet, tonight, we're really hearing that it's gonna be a festivities committee, we wanna have festivals, all well and good, but the words matter, and the intent matters. The petitioner's message is clear. Maladies that he believes, and his committee, exist throughout the world, also exist in Bristol. These words tell all residents, this town, which is a white town, they are, they are biased and racist. It's a simple-minded and insulting premise crafted without a single ounce of proof or truth. I respectfully request that the petition be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Steve Saint Angelo. If you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
Steve Saint Angelo, three Erickson Lane. I'm going to, I oppose what we need. There is no need, there is no systemic racism in Bristol. A group like this, we're wanting to be divisive, just like it did with the DeWolff Tavern, where they went and showed videos and this and that, and the council will end up being a target of this, because if you don't agree with anything this select group says, and if you're not with their selective thought, you will be the target, and they will destroy what we have here in this wonderful town. You know, I remember how you guys caved to the BLM flag. You're gonna do that again if you give these people their way. I oppose it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Carly Rish. If you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
Let me make sure I'm not muted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Carly Rish, ninety-nine Aaron Avenue. Oh my goodness, I've been trying to come up with some words. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, so please bear with me, I will be, I will be brief. I have lived in Bristol for eight years, and I've loved being a part of this community. But as a white woman, I cannot speak to whether or not our friends who aren't white, who aren't straight, who aren't married feel included. I have heard stories from some of my very dear friends who don't always feel welcome. I cannot confidently speak as somebody who is part of the included class how other people that aren't part of that class feel. We don't know what we don't know unless we take the time to hear each other's stories. I think this committee will give us an opportunity to be able to sit down, see and hear one another, and support one another, and then we can sort of fill in and learn where we might be coming up a little bit short. I love our town of Bristol, and I'm very proud to be part of it, and I know that this can only make our town a better, more inclusive place for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, I don't see anybody else?
I do not either, Mr. Chairman.
We received, I actually got a list earlier from the clerk, and I believe we've gone through, let me just make sure, it was, let me be clear, we received a request to speak at this council meeting earlier that went through the clerk's office, and the clerk shared with me before the meeting started, and I believe it was Nick Pinello, Mike Burns, Bob Campanella, Joseph Nero, Richard Falcone. I did see his name earlier, but I don't see his name up, and now I see it up. And there was one more, which was Peter Hewitt. So I'm gonna call on Richard Falcone and Peter Hewitt, because I don't see those, any other names up. Richard, if you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
Hey, Nathan, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. It's great to go through this, all these comments. As far as I can see, I've been here since nineteen seventy-two in the area, lived in Bristol since seventy.
Can you hear me? I'm gonna ask if you would, if you could, I haven't started the time, if you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
I apologize, Richard Falcone, Richard Falcone, ten Wendy Drive.
Thank you.
All right. It's great to hear all these comments, I'm learning things from it. I've been here since seventy-three. I think it's a great town, but as far as I can tell, this DEI petition is a solution in search of a problem. And if there is a problem, the problem can be handled outside of the town council and that town government. There are many committees, as has been mentioned by many other people tonight, that can take up any concerns and be welcoming, and to provide assistance, and provide direction, and to integrate anybody who feels unintegrated into this community. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Pete Hewitt. If you could state your full name and address for the record, Chris, if you could help
Am I up now?
Yes. If you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
Pete Hewitt, eleven Wendy Drive.
Thank you.
I oppose the town council's official approval of the DEI committee. It would result in its being added to our town's present group of boards and commissions. I believe it is unnecessary and divisive, and will be anything but unified. it is unnecessary and divisive, and will be anything but unifying. I see no reason why Mr. Hancock and his supporters need to have an official imprimatur of the council in order to achieve its mission and goals. Why can't they simply establish themselves as an autonomous citizens' organization, much like the Bristol County Concerned Citizens and other charity-focused groups, and direct their attention and energies to identifying real versus imagined issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion? And if and when deemed worthy, they could bring such issues to the attention of their fellow Bristol residents, our town administrator, and the town council by writing letters to the editor and or getting on the agenda to speak directly to the council members. I have no objection to DEI advocates starting a perceived civic-minded organization. It is their right to do so. But if we are really looking for a win-win opportunity to resolve this apparent irreconcilable impasse among those in favor and those opposed to the petition as it is now presented, that solution seems to me to be the most reasonable and doable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so th- this is not a public hearing, but I'm gonna close public comment. There are no hands raised at the moment, so we will stop right there.